This is Chairman Polly. I'm calling the. We just had some feedback. I'm calling the meeting to order of the Sacramento County Planning Commission, May 11th. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Would you like to take role, please?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Martenson? Here. Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Commissioner Hom?
Here.
Commissioner Tatiishi?
Here.
Commissioner Shelby? You have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you like to see if anyone needs to be sworn in?
There are two applicants. If you give me a moment, I think we're going to have a staff presentation first for the two first two items. So if we could hold off on the swearing in until after those presentations?
Perfect. Okay, so could you announce the first item, please?
Item number one, PLER 2020-00031, Review of Sacramento County's 2021 Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. Environmental document is not applicable.
We have a staff presentation?
Yes, we do. My name is Todd Taylor, and I'm an Associate Planner with the Planning and Environmental Review Office. This is an item that comes before your commission every year. It is the review of the county's Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP, for fiscal year 2020-21. Next slide. The CIP outlines planned projects over the next five years, and each year, the CIP is updated with new projects as part of the annual budget process. This is all done in accordance with Section 21.15 of the county code. Also part of this section of the county code is the guidance for the review of the CIP by the Planning Commission. The purpose of this review is to determine if projects are consistent with the general plan and to address any issues before the board approves the CIP. It is not to evaluate the specific merits, cost, or environmental impact of the projects. Next slide. The process for this review starts with the Board of Supervisors. On April 7th of this year, the board received the CIP and forwarded it to the Planning Commission for review. The Planning Commission then makes a determination that the projects are consistent with the general plan and forwards its findings back to the board. The board then receives the findings and adopts the CIP as part of their summer budget hearing. Each year, the projects that are included, that are provided to the Planning Commission for review are new projects that are not previously, that have not previously been reviewed as a, as part of a previous CIP review. And this year, the majority of the new projects are improvements and upgrades to existing facilities. Next slide. These new projects came from airports, county buildings and capital construction, libraries, transportation, waste management, recycling, and water resources, both their drainage and water supply sections. This year, there were no new projects listed from regional parks. Next slide. The materials provided to the Planning Commission for their review include a table of the new projects and a general plan policy analysis for each, descriptions of the projects, and any additional background documents relevant to the analysis. Staff review of the projects include against the goals, objectives, and policies of the general plan indicated that all of the new projects were consistent with the general plan. Next slide. Therefore, it's staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution, finding that the projects listed in the five-year CIP of the county of Sacramento fiscal year 2020-21 budget are consistent with the adopted policies of the county's general plan and direct the county executives report back to the Board of Supervisors with the Planning Commission's findings. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. So Commissioners, is there discussion? So would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for, to go with staff recommendations on adopting the resolution and direct the report to the, to the board.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Okay, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Martenson? Could you not hear me now?
Now, we just, we just now heard you. We can't hear you now.
Oh, okay. Yes. Commissioner Polly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hom?
Yes.
Commissioner Tatiishi?
Yes.
Commissioner Shelby? Commissioner Shelby? Yes, sir.
All right, perfect.
We didn't hear your vote.
Commissioner Shelby?
Yes.
On the CIP? Yes? Okay, thank you. And the motion passes with unanimous vote.
Thank you all very much. Could we have the next item on the agenda, please?
Item number two, PLMP 2019-00198, zoning code amendments related to industrial hemp. Environmental document is exempt.
And I understand we have a staff report?
Yes, we do. We actually have two presenters for this item. I'm going to introduce the industrial hemp, PLLP 2019-00198, and then the next five slides, Chris Flores with the ag commission, the ag commissioner will present those next five slides. So if you could, yeah, change slides and then.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
No, we're, we're seeing, we're seeing the slides change, but we did not hear a presentation. I, I'm sorry, but could you start from the beginning?
Yeah. Hi, everybody. Good evening. This is Chris Flores. I am the Agricultural Commissioner for Sacramento County. Nice to meet you all under these interesting circumstances. For the past nine months, I've been working with planning staff Mark Michelini and Wendy Hartman, along with Supervising Deputy June Powles-Maze from the County Council's Office, on the industrial hemp ordinance and proposed zoning code changes before you tonight. We've put a lot of thought into this with many reiterations as we've been developing a program alongside a program that has been developing at a state and federal level. So what is industrial hemp? The definition before you was refined by California's Senate Bill 153, which became effective January 1st of this year, and has been codified in California Food and Agriculture Code, Section 81000. Industrial hemp is a variety of cannabis sativa that has a high cannabidiol or CBD content and a very low THC content. State definition, industrial hemp plants cannot exceed a THC level of more than 0.3% on a dry weight basis. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Industrial hemp is a fast-growing plant, and it can be grown for many purposes, including paper, textiles, biodegradable plastics, biofuel, and food. And although hemp is being grown in some states for fiber, the majority of hemp production in California is for CBD extraction. Next slide, please. As I mentioned earlier, the state and federal rules in the industry of hemp has been evolving over the past several years. In 2014, the Federal Farm Bill authorized an institution of higher education or a State Department of Agriculture to cultivate industrial hemp through an agricultural pilot program. With the passing of the 2018 Farm Bill, industrial hemp was removed from Schedule I of the Controlled Substances Act, allowing it to be lawfully grown and cultivated as an agricultural product under a U.S. Department of Ag-approved state plan. Next slide, please. Over the past several years, the state of California is creating regulations to allow for the commercial cultivation of industrial hemp in the state. The California Department of Food and Agriculture has adopted sections in Title III of the California Code of Regulations pertaining to the registration, sampling, and testing for THC content, harvesting, and the destruction of noncompliant crops. On May 1st, the state was to submit their state plan to the federal government for approval, and that state plan basically consists of the regulations that they created. And with that, I will turn over the presentation to Mark Michelini to describe the proposed county program. Next slide, please.
Good evening. I'm Mark Michelini with the Office of Planning and Environmental Review. So I'm going to go over the overview of the amendments. So we're amending Chapter 3 and Chapter 7 of the Sacramento County Zoning Code, and also Chapter 6.87 of the Sacramento County Code relating to industrial hemp regulation to allow cultivation of commercial hemp, D production, processing, and nursery uses. Next slide, please. Some of the key points of the overall amendments, it will allow for the cultivation of industrial hemp within the county with a license from the county ag commissioner and registration with the state. The updates also provide requirements such as setbacks, fine age limitation to the growing season, security plans, and destruction plans that will help hopefully alleviate the nuisances. They also provide enforcement for violations and public nuisances. Next slide, please. This is for Chapter 3 of the zoning code, some of the updates. It will allow cultivation of commercial hemp, D production, processing, and nursery uses. Outer cultivation will be permitted on AG zone parcels with a minimum size of 20 acres. Indoor cultivation will be allowed on M1 and M2 industrial sites, with the odor shall not be detectable from outside of the building. Also, established agriculture research institutes are permitted to cultivate, and they have a maximum planting area of one acre. It allows for processing of industrial hemp in AG, M1, and M2 zones, and establishes setbacks and signage standards that are located and administered by the county code. Next slide, please. The Chapter 7 of the zoning code is the definition chapter. So for agriculture uses and primary processing of agriculture products, we just updated for them to include industrial hemp. And then there are eight new definitions that are related to industrial hemp for agriculture research institutes, hemp, hemp breeder, industrial hemp, industrial hemp cultivation, nursery horticulture, nursery stock, and sensitive receptors. Next slide, please. Then the county code, some of the updates, it will require a license issued from the ag commissioners. There will be a bond that they'll have to have in order before they plant a crop in case the THC level is above 0.3%, and the crop needs to be destroyed. The setback standards are also in the county code, when generally, a lot of times, they're in the zoning code. We thought it provided a lot more flexibility to be in the agricultural, excuse me, to be in the county code. And there are also signage requirements for industrial hemp, and the county code does have provisions for violations and public nuisances. And next slide, please. So we've went to, had some workshops at some of the CPACs, like we went to the Antona CPAC, Rio Linda Alberta, Consumers Southeast. We've also taken the update package to the Agriculture Advisory Committee twice, and gotten their feedback and incorporated that into the staff report and the updates. And next slide, please. The staff is recommending approval of the zoning code and county code amendments pertaining to the industrial hemp to the Board of Supervisors, specifically zoning code Chapter 3 and 7, and county code Chapter 6.87. Next slide, please. And that will conclude my presentation. Open to any questions you may have?
I have a question.
Yes.
This is Kara. You mentioned that the part of the regulations limit the cultivation to a growing season. Can you explain that a little bit and expand on how that applies to both indoor and outdoor cultivation?
I might defer that to Chris Flores, the ag commissioner. I think she could give a better synopsis of that, if that's okay. She should be able to switch mics out.
Hey Kara, thanks for the question. Actually, you know what? When Mark mentioned that in the, in the presentation, I was looking through the ordinance to find out when you did that. And I don't, I don't know that we did. We, we have restricted the usage of outdoor lighting between certain hours, because I've heard that in Ventura County, they've had a lot of issues around people who want to grow hemp 24/7, and they're growing it in greenhouses under lights. And I know a lot of neighboring folks have had complaints about that. So we limited the outdoor lighting to certain timeframes. And I'm looking for, I don't believe we did adjust the growing period. I don't see that, Mark.
Yes, I think you're correct. I was mixed up on that. I do apologize.
I think we were, yeah. We were just talking about the outdoor light restrictions. We have a time period for that.
Yeah, I should have corrected.
Okay, that makes a lot more sense. And then just one additional question. The regs limit cultivation to a 20-acre parcel, but they also limit cultivation for research purposes to just one acre on a 20-acre parcel. Is that pursuant to state laws? Or a reason why we're limiting cultivation for research purposes to such a confined space within a bigger parcel? Or what's the purpose of that?
Do you want me to answer that, Mark?
Yes, please. Thank you.
So just based on, on other county experiences and counties that allowed industrial hemp to be grown by the, the education group prior to having an ordinance in place, what they found was that a lot of growers pretended to be institutes of higher education, but weren't really affiliated with any kind of college or university. And so they were under that guise, growing a lot of hemp. And what I've also learned from groups like UC Extension and UC Natural Resource Group, they have mentioned that you don't need more than an acre if you're really truly growing hemp for educational purposes. So if they're doing it for research, they don't need more than an acre. And so some, some of the counties that have already gone ahead and approved ordinances have, have limited the research institutes to an acre, and they've found that that's very reasonable.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
So this is Tina Polly, and I, I don't know about this plant in a non-research industrial use. What is it used for in that manner?
So I'm glad this slide is up, because it's, it shows a industrial hemp planting, growing, and what you'll see is that on every end of those, those stems is going to be flower, a little flower bud that develops. And so they, they prune them that way so that they develop more flower buds. That's where they are getting the CBD oil when they extract it from that. They're mostly growing it for the CBD oil, which, you know, is in, seems to be in everything now, including, you know, drinks, soft drinks, what have you. And so that's the, that's the main purpose. They grow these plants, they grow them for the buds. The buds have the CBD in them, and they extract it. And I think in the staff report, Mark explained that there's a few ways to extract the oils from those flowers. Other areas are growing them for fiber, and they're grown, they look more like cornstalk when they're grown that way, when they grow them for the stalk. But in California, they're really growing them for that CBD flower. The difference between this and marijuana is that the flower doesn't have any psychotropic, you know, it doesn't have any characteristics that would create that psychotropic effect. So it will not get too high. They're just, they're just growing it for that CBD. And there's still, you know, obviously, a lot of research being done as to the health benefits of CBD.
So that, that was my next question. Is CBD FDA-approved as a medicine? And if not, is this similar to people who have, like lavender oils?
It is currently. So FDA is working on, you know, the research needed to approve it, but there's a lot of studies that have to happen first. And so, so products can have CBD in them legally, but they can't make certain claims. They can't claim that it's a health benefit. But they can have CBD in them legally, as long as they, you know, say that it's in there. So they're working on, you know, expanding that, obviously, but they just don't have enough information yet.
Thank you for that explanation.
Sure.
Commissioners, are there other questions for staff? Okay, thank you so much. Did we have any comments from the public on this item?
No, we did not have any comments from the public, and I just checked the box, and we didn't receive any for this item.
Thank you. So I'll close that portion and open it up, Commissioners, for either discussion or a motion.
I'm happy to make, move the staff recommendation. This is Kara.
I'll second it.
Okay, do you mind calling the vote?
Commissioner Martenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Polly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hom?
Yes.
Commissioner Tatiishi?
Yes.
Commissioner Shelby?
Yeah.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you so much. Could we have the next item, please?
Item number two, PLMP 2019-00176, Use Permit and Design Review. Environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Meredith Holesworth from the Office of Planning and Environmental Review. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
There's a little bit of background noise somebody just had, so it's gone now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I am the project manager for the KXPR Radio Tower Project, so I'll be giving you the presentation tonight. Next slide, please. The project site is located at 7351 Eagles Nest Road. It's approximately 2,500 feet south of Florin Road in the Vineyard Community. As you can see in the zoning map on the right, the project site is zoned AG 160 and is surrounded on all sides by AG 160 zoning. The site is currently undeveloped for almost the entirety of it. There is a single-family residence in the northwestern corner. The site is currently used as ag land and will continue to be utilized as ag land. The request includes a use permit to allow a broadcast radio tower on this project site, as well as a design review to comply with the countywide design guidelines. Next slide. The site plan here shows the location of where the tower will be on the project site. This is along the northern property line. Access to the radio tower would be via an existing private driveway that extends east out from Eagles Nest Road. The driveway is proposed to be regraded and gravelled, and there will be a new gate at the entry from Eagles Nest Road. You can see from above, there's three anchor points for supporting cables surrounding the radio tower. They're each equally spaced and attach the tower. They're terminating at the ground anchor about 280 feet from the tower each. Next slide. On the right is another view of the anchor points from above, and then on the left, there's a view of the side elevation of the tower. You can see the proposed locations on the tower of the beacons and the antennas. Next slide. I'm not seeing the next slide, but I'll go ahead with it. The, as illustrated on the, on the elevations, the radio tower does reach a maximum height of 338 feet. The proposed tower and associated ground equipment consists of a backup emergency generator and an 1,800 square foot building to house the tower transmitter. That will be located on a 4,000-square-foot pad. The project site is currently encumbered with an existing Williamson Act contract. However, the proposed project is specifically listed as a compatible use under this Williamson Act contract, so it's not at all in conflict. There are seven residences within a one-mile radius of where the proposed tower would be located. A mitigated NAG deck was prepared for this project to analyze potential environmental impacts, and that covered topics of agricultural resources, aesthetics, airports, biological resources, and then also hazards and hazardous materials. It was determined that the project would result in less than significant impacts with mitigation. Next slide. The Design Review Advisory Committee reviewed the project in September of 2019 and found the location to be appropriate. They did not take any issue with the proposed ground equipment and building, and they reviewed the provided photo simulations and determined that the tower would not be an aesthetic nuisance and that the placement would result in very limited number of people who would see it. They did recommend that the project be found in substantial compliance with countywide design guidelines. The Vineyard CPAC reviewed the project in November of 2019, and they did not express any concerns with the project as proposed, and there were no members of the public who spoke regarding this project. The CPAC did recommend a unanimous approval of the project, and upon noticing of the final hearing, four letters in support of the project have been received by the clerk of the board and have been forwarded to your commission. Next slide, please. Staff makes the following recommendations to determine that the environmental analysis is adequate pursuant to SEQA and complete, and adopt the mitigated negative declaration. is adequate pursuant to SEQA and complete, and adopt the mitigated negative declaration, to approve the use permit to allow the radio tower, subject to findings and conditions listed in Attachment 2 of the staff report, and to find the project in substantial compliance with countywide design guidelines, subject to findings and conditions. That does conclude staff's presentation. I'm available for questions, and we have the applicant on the line for questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have questions? Hey, thank you. Did the applicant want to add anything? It appears we don't have questions.
Well, I have, I would just like, if it's all right, I would just like, the station would like me to read a little quick little thing. I don't mean to be redundant, but since we don't, we're not in front of you. I'm Bob Rosenberg. I'm the project manager for Capital Public Radio Towers relocation, which we have before you. It's also known as CAP Radio. We are Sacramento-based, part of the California State University Sacramento, and a community resource with over 40 years of continual service, operating seven primary stations, as well as a variety of repeaters. In addition, CAP Radio is the provider and operator of the Capital News Bureau, which provides the government affairs to over 85 public radio stations throughout the state of California, as well as part of northwestern Nevada and southern Oregon. This is the only full-time bureau left covering Capitol Affairs of the state, many which take on regional and national importance. The seven CAP Radio stations, augmented by a series of translators, run, cover the area from Northern California Valley, from said, north, as well as the northwest Nevada, Tahoe, and Reno. Our flagship station was based in Sacramento, or KXJZ, carrying NPR, regional and local programming, and KPR, the subject of today's meeting. KPR is the region's presently leading classical programmer, but it also serves an important role as a national emergency on our backup to KXJZ. The stations operate 365 days a year, reaching over 475,000 average listeners and additional worldwide audiences by the worldwide web and assorted media platforms. And this extensive regional and local programs are made possible through the support of the members and the partners to put on programs like Beth Ruiak with Insight, the different reports on Metaview, on Tahoe, et cetera. The project's over 13-year effort of trying to improve the access. Currently, the present tower, located near Walnut Grove, is unable to provide a dependable or powerful signal to South Placer County, as well as eastern Sacramento County and western El Dorado. In addition, areas like Carmichael, inside downtown office buildings and other pockets, are faced with impacted signal that this is substantially improved. As the media landscape has changed, CAP Radio has been expanding news, community engagement, art support, and communication throughout the region. CAP Radio is in the process of bringing their DSUS footprint downtown, and this includes a community center in partnership with Sutter Health, known as the Sutter Health Center for Community Engagement, on, beyond Eighth and J, and there'll be new expanded offices we'll relocate to downtown, as the university keeps making a bigger impact on the region. KXJZ and KXPR, as we stated, are a critical component to the emergency broadcast network. We have the ability to, with these two stations alone, to reach over 2.9 million people without the other stations in the system. A tower relocation with lots of open areas may appear to be, yeah, they may appear to be wide open, but the reality is there's severe restraints beyond just land use, airspaces for transportation, and conflicting signals from other forms of broadcast, when coupled with terrain and land use are formidable obstacles, and it make it very difficult. We've been work, working very closely with landowners and contacts with the neighbors, community companies, and individual volunteers that have been part of our planning process, though, then we owe many thanks. CAP Radio has collaborated with the Sacramento County Planning Staff, and especially want to thank Meredith Holesworth on the planning side, and Julie Newton on the environmental side, as well as the rest of the Planning Department staff. Over the many years working on this project with the help of Leanne Moffett, Manuel Mejia, and many others, we've proceeded to tonight's request for approval. We have read the report, and concur with its recommendations and findings, and request your approval.
Thank you very much. Alma, I neglected to ask if we needed to swear in the applicant. Since it was a, a letter that was being read, I'm not sure if that's considered testimony or not.
It was actually of my, I just wrote out my notes, so I would stay with it on course.
Oh, okay.
I'd be glad to be done. I forgot, I started to say it earlier, I've been sworn, then something else came up, and I, my mute microphone on mute, so my apologies for this and that.
Well, we're all, we're all working through doing this remotely, so thank you so much for your patience.
I'll stand and be sworn.
Okay, I can administer the oath now. Please raise your right hand, and the appropriate responses, I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God. If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I affirm and say I do.
And please, please state your name for the record.
Bob or Robert Rosenberg.
Additionally, Chairperson Polly, additionally, I'd like to add, I neglected to include the address for the project, for this project at 7055 Folsom Boulevard, in the Vineyard Community.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Actually, the correct address is 7351 Eagles Nest Road. The 7055 Folsom Boulevard is where the present, that's on the campus, and that's where the present Capital Public Radio offices are.
Okay, thank you. Do, do we have everything we need to clarify that point?
I believe so. Thank you.
Oh, good. All right. Thank you so much. Commissioners, as I open this up for you to ask the applicant questions, I would ask that you do two things. Before you speak, if you could clearly state your name, so that those keeping minutes know who's speaking. And then if you make a motion, if you could also clearly state your name, first and last name, that would be helpful. So, so thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Do we have questions for the applicant?
Commissioner Polly, this is Chris Pahouli. I just wanted to interject really quickly that although the address is incorrect, the assessor's parcel number that's, that's on the agenda is correct and does refer to the 7351 Eagles Nest Road. So just wanted to put that on the record.
Okay, thank you. And I did see from the map where the location is, and it was clear, I think, from that as well. Thank you. Hey, commissioners, discussion? All right. Do we have a motion?
The staff recommendation, this is Kara Martenson.
I'll second that. This is Alan Hom.
Okay, so we have a first from Commissioner Martenson, and a second from Commissioner Hom. Could you call the vote, please?
Commissioner Martenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Polly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hom?
Yes.
Commissioner Tatishi?
Yes.
Commissioner Shelby?
Yeah.
And the, and the motion passes by unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Could you call the, the next item, please?
Item number four, Community Plan Amendment Rezone, Tentative Subdivision Map, Special Development Map and Design Review for a project located at 5536 Turnbull Circle in the Fair Oaks Community.
Good evening, commissioners. This is Meredith Holesworth again. Jesse Shen is the project manager for this project, but she is out on maternity leave as of today, so I'll be presenting the Turnbull Place project before you this evening. Next slide, please. The project site is located at 5536 Turnbull Circle. It's about 0.2 miles northwest of the Madison and Illinois Avenue intersection within the Fair Oaks Community. As you can see in the aerial imagery on the left, the project site is currently developed with its, a two-story, single-family residential structure and several accessory structures located in the central portion of the project site. Access is provided via an existing gated driveway that extends west from Turnbull Circle. The remaining portions of the project site are densely vegetated with trees, natural grasses, and weeds. Topography of the site slopes southwestward, which corresponds with the location of the southern branch of Arden Creek, located along the west and southern perimeter of the project site, as shown in the existing zoning designation map on the right. The floodplain associated with the Arden, with the southern branch of Arden Creek is depicted in green, which corresponds with the natural streams zoning overlay on the project site. And the project site is surrounded by RD4 and RD5 zoning districts, which are predominantly developed with single-family residential uses. Next slide. The request includes a community plan amendment and corresponding rezone of approximately 5.4 acres of AR5-zoned land and 0.16 acres of RD5-land, the total of 5.56 acres, all of which has the natural stream overlay, to the proposed RD3 zoning district, and that will also have the natural stream overlay. The tentative subdivision map to divide the entire project site of 5.56 acres into 12 lots in the proposed RD3 zone. And that includes a special development permit to allow those 12 single-family residential lots to be served by a private drive, as well as a design review to comply with the countywide design guidelines. Next slide. As shown, the project proposes a community plan amendment and rezone of the existing 5.56-acre split-zone parcel to RD3. The existing location of the natural stream overlay on the project site would not change, and it would remain as is on the project site. Next slide. The proposed tentative subdivision map depicts the division of the project in, project site into 12 lots. That would be four single-family residential uses. Access to all of the proposed lots would be provided via a 30-foot-wide paved private drive from Turnbull Circle. The shape of the private drive at the northern terminus is U-shaped, wrapping around the east, south, and west portions of proposed Lot 7, which is in the middle there. The existing family residential structure would be located on that central parcel, Lot 7. The proposed lots would range between 13,000 and 39,000 square feet in size, and although the design of the homes has not been finalized, based on illustrative floor plans, one- and two-story structures ranging between about 2,500 to about 3,300 square feet in size are envisioned on the proposed resulting lots. Each single-family residential structure would include an attached two- or three-car garage. The project is anticipated to provide 30 spaces within these garages, 30 spaces on the driveways, and then an additional 23 spaces along the private drive, and that would be a total of 83 parking spaces on the project site. No grading activities or project construction would take place within Arden Creek or the corresponding natural streams overlay associated with the stream's floodplain. The majority of the existing trees would be maintained on-site. 23, sorry, 24 of the 143 trees inventoried would be removed due to poor condition or project construction. An additional 11 trees would experience up to 20% canopy encroachment from proposed structures. Next slide. The final hearing body for this project is the board. The project is consistent with the general plan and applicable community plan, and general findings can be made in support of the requested deviation for the special development permit. The proposal is compatible with surrounding neighborhood in terms of use and block pattern, lot configuration, and lot size. A negative declaration and MMRP were prepared to address biological resources and cultural resources. Additionally, concerns expressed by the community in regards to this project include existing traffic and parking issues on Turnbull Circle, that the proposed density is incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood, that the project has potential to increase flooding issues, and that there could be some construction period impacts such as noise, privacy, and traffic. Upon noticing of the public commission, sorry, the planning commission hearing this evening, two letters in opposition have been received by the clerk and forwarded to your commission, also expressing concern with these issues I just mentioned. Next slide. The DRAC reviewed the project and commented that the proposed layout and circulation of the project created a sense of neighborhood, and that the siding of the proposed homes appeared appropriate in location, given the existing environmental constraints. The DRAC indicated that the floor plans demonstrated considerations made to each proposed lots' unique constraints and characteristics. As such, the DRAC recommends that the board find the project in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines, with the addition of a recommended condition, and that is to require that the design of the homes be subject to subsequent nondiscretionary design review. Community concerns that were described in the previous slide were expressed at the Fair Oaks CPAC meeting in May of 2019. The Fair Oaks CPAC recommended approval of the project, and they included the addition of some recommended conditions as well. Those were to limit structures on lots 1 through 6 and Lot 12 to one story, to install screen fencing to maintain privacy of adjacent residential uses during construction, as well as to install a permanent landscape buffer along the northern perimeters of lots 5 and 12. The applicant is agreeable to the recommended conditions. Next slide, please. Her staff recommends that the planning commission make the following recommendations to the board: to determine that the environmental analysis prepared pursuant to SEQA is adequate and complete, and to adopt the negative declaration; to adopt the MMRP; to approve the resolution authorizing an amendment to the Fair Oaks Community Plan land use designation from the existing AR5 and RD5 zoning districts to the RD3 with the natural stream overlay zoning district, subject to findings and conditions; to approve the ordinance for a rezone from the same designations mentioned for the community plan amendment, subject to findings and conditions; to approve the tentative subdivision map and special development permit, subject to findings and conditions; and finally, to find the project in substantial compliance with countywide design guidelines. That does include staff's presentation. Planning management staff is available for questions on this project, and we do have the applicant on the line for questions as well, and he will also need to be sworn in. Thank you.
Commissioner Polly?
I made such a great speech while I was muted. Thank you. So before we swear in the applicant, commissioners, do you have questions for staff? Okay, thank you. Could we swear in the applicant, please?
Yes. Mr. Norman?
This is Steve Norman. Yes.
Please raise your right hand, and the appropriate responses, I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God. If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do. Swear.
Please state, please state your name for the record.
Steve Norman.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Norman. Please proceed.
Yes, I'm representing the, this is Steve Norman of the CNA Engineering. I'm here representing the owner of the property, and we reviewed the staff report and, and concur with all the conditions of approval and have no objection. with all the conditions of approval and have no objections to anything that's in there. And I have you for any questions that the planning commission may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, does anyone have a question for the applicant? I do want to say that I, that I read the letters from the public, and I thought that they were well-written and thoughtful, and showed concerns such as the water drainage in the flood zones and the noise and additional traffic. In my opinion, the, this project has, has found ways to mitigate all of those. I think the key will be the quality of implementation, as it is with any, especially an infill project. Would you like to speak to this developer and the plans to make sure that the neighbors are impacted as little as possible?
Is that a question to me?
It was, thank you, yes. It is a question to you.
Well, this project has taken, been in the planning department for part a while, and my client has worked hard to deal with all the concerns of the neighbors, especially the ones that came from the community council when we met with them. We were, we understood their concerns, and we revised the tentative map to, to address their concerns, especially in the, in the construction and especially parking, which was an issue, so we made sure we had plenty of onsite parking, over 80 stalls available for parking. We limited our heights of our buildings. We were very conscious to the environmental aspects of the site with the trees, and we tried to save and design around the trees, and tried to save the old storehouse that was, this bit on the pride for a long time. So we've worked hard, along with staff, and I want to say that the staff member Jesse did a fabulous job in working on this with us to coordinate all the design aspects, and we're hoping that this, as far as the project, once done, will be an asset to the community. Okay?
Thank you. So I'll close the public part of this. Commissioners, do you have discussion, or would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendations. This is Commissioner Tatisi.
I'll give it, Commissioner Shelby.
So the first motion was Commissioner Tatisi, and the second was Commissioner Shelby. Could you call the vote, please?
Commissioner Martenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Polly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hom?
Yes.
Commissioner Tatisi?
Yes.
Commissioner Shelby?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So could we have the director's report?
Yeah, this is Chris Pahouli, principal planner. Just have a couple of items that I wanted to mention to you. The first is that last week, the Board of Supervisors took action on a interim urgency ordinance that, among other things, extended the expiration date for all use permits and other entitlements, extended the expiry, or I'm sorry, told the expiration of those, those entitlements from March 2020 through December 2021. So the upshot of that action is that any use permits or other entitlements that were set to expire between, again, March of 2020 and December of 2021 will now all expire on December 2021, December 31, 2021. The rationale is, is that in light of the economic uncertainties that we're all facing, to give property owners and applicants a little bit more time to get their applications in and get processing started on entitlements that were set to expire. I should mention that that does not apply currently to map expirations. The county, our understanding is the county does not have the ability to extend map expirations without some action by the state, and so we are currently looking to the state to see if there's going to be any action there, and also consulting with other county, counties and cities to see what actions they might be taking, if any, to extend maps that are set to expire. So again, wanted to mention that that package was, was brought before the board and approved last week. I also want to mention, we have begun holding CPAC meetings using remote technology. Our first CPAC meeting was last week, it was the Fair Oaks CPAC meeting. The meeting was very successful, went well, and the CPAC members were all able to participate and provide comments and opinions about the project that was before them. We have another CPAC meeting this week, the Vineyard, and setting up a schedule for upcoming CPAC meetings so that we can continue projects moving forward through, through the community review process. And then finally, just wanted to mention that your next meeting is scheduled for June 8. We have items that are lining up for that meeting, and so I would anticipate that we will be holding that meeting, and just wanted to give you that heads up, and that's all that I have for the report.
Thank you. You know, normally, we would open this up to public comment, but, you know, we, we don't have a good way to do that. Have we received any other emails from the public during the meeting?
Commissioner, we have not received any other public comment. I've been checking the box to see. I do want to add one last thing from the clerk, that we will be correcting the address for item number three on the action summary.
Oh, thank you for that. Okay, well, I'm going to adjourn this evening's meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Thanks.